A land use plan and zoning map amendment. So to start with some of the basics, the applicant for this request is WP East Acquisitions LLC, and they are requesting a land use plan amendment as well as a conditional rezoning for four properties, 1107, 1109, and 1113 Morrisville Carpenter Road and Zero Davis Drive. Those four parcels are identified in the map on the screen. And it's located generally at the southwest corner of Morrisville Carpenter Road and Davis Drive. Currently, it is that they all are zoned low-density residential, and they're identified on the future land use map also as low-density residential. And the land use plan amendment request is to change the designation to the Neighborhood Activities Center designation and to change the zoning to conditional Neighborhood Activities Center zoning. Both the land use plan amendment and the rezoning are legislative requests, meaning that they are discretionary decisions. The surrounding properties are identified here with their zoning categories. So to the north is Morrisville Carpenter Road, and across the street are some parcels that are zoned Neighborhood Activities Center, and those contain uses that are retail and shopping center. The Walgreens is across the street. And to the east, there is a parcel on the corner that's also Neighborhood Activities Center zoned, that's retail use, which is the CVS. Next to it is also a low-density residential zoned parcel that has a single-family detached home, and then a portion of the subject parcels also butt onto Davis Drive to the east. To the south of the parcels is a vacant piece of land that's in Towneckary's jurisdiction, and that zoning is conditional multifamily residential district. And to the west is also Towneckary's jurisdiction. That's zoned major planned development district, and there are single-family detached homes there. There are three property owners for the four parcels. Two of the parcels are owned by the same group. And the total acreage is approximately 20 acres for the four parcels combined. Currently, two of the parcels are vacant, and the other two have single-family detached homes on them. One of the four parcels is already annexed into corporate limits, and the other three are not. They're in the town's ETJ. As mentioned, this is a conditional rezoning, so that means that if it's approved, any of the uses permitted by right in the Neighborhood Activities Center zoning district, except for those that are specifically prohibited in the conditions, which I'll get to a little bit later, would be permitted to be constructed on the property. However, the petitioner has indicated that their intent is to develop this property as multifamily with a live-work component to it. So I'm going to give a brief overview of the conditions that were included in the application packet and in the briefing packet. So there are a number of conditions that are proposed related to uses. The first one states that four uses that are normally allowed in the Neighborhood Activities Center zoning district are going to be proposed to be excluded due to compatibility with the surrounding areas. Additionally, because residential development is envisioned for the property, there is a desire to provide outdoor play area for children. And also, a live-work dwelling use is proposed to be part of the development to help achieve some of the mixed-use component outlined in the land use plan and to offer more housing options and variety. Condition number four is broken up to several parts, and they're all related to cross-access and connectivity. So cross-access driveways are proposed to be built to two of the adjoining properties to the east. And in the sketch plan, you can see just general locations of where those cross-access driveways might go. So this arrow in the center here is indicative of one of those cross-access driveways, as well as this one down here. Condition four goes on to explain that, in addition to the cross-access stubbed out to the property line, that payment in lieu of construction would be offered for vehicular and pedestrian cross-access connections onto the adjacent property. And then additionally, due to some of the environmental constraints on the property, on the southern portion of the property, the applicant is proposing not to provide a direct connection to Davis Drive through the site. Condition number five is also related to access, and it's related to the driveways and specifically related to the driveway spacing. So it would grant up to a 20% reduction in the required driveway spacing. This is something that the UDO allows. So the two gray arrows are the driveways in question as far as the 320-foot spacing, as well as the spacing from the center driveway with the existing CVS driveway. And the condition also states that any additional driveway, including the third driveway shown right here, that wouldn't meet those reduced spacing standards, would be for emergency use only. This condition relates to preserving open space and tree-save area. Approximately eight acres of the site on the southern portion have significant environmental features, including natural streams, wetlands, and also a portion of the property is in the floodplain. The pink area identified on the map is the 100-year floodplain, and the purple area identified on the map is the 500-year floodplain. So this condition proposes to designate much of this area as open space and tree-preservation area. And additionally, the Towneckary and Morrisville's greenway master plans show a future greenway along the southern property line. And at this time, the exact location of the greenway hasn't been designed or determined, but this condition allows for the possibility of dedicating a Towneckary greenway easement if the location of the greenway or the construction of the greenway necessitates an easement on this parcel. And then finally, the remaining two conditions are related to transportation improvements, and they propose to contribute a payment in lieu fee of construction towards improvement at two intersections. One is the Morrisville Carpenter Road and Davis Drive intersection, which would be to contribute towards a right-turn lane. And the other is at the intersection of Morrisville Parkway and Davis Drive, also for a right-turn lane. We've identified some potential impacts related to transportation and schools. So this table shows the potential traffic generated under the current zoning district of low-density residential, based on the district's maximum allowable density. I do want to point out, though, that with other UDO requirements, it would probably not be feasible to accommodate 89 single-family detached dwelling units on the parcel, even though technically, when you do the math for the maximum allowable density with the acreage, that's what the number would come out to. Therefore, the traffic counts would most likely be lower than what you're seeing in the table here. And I do also want to point out that there are other uses besides single-family detached homes that are currently permitted in the low-density residential district, such as places of worship, public recreation facilities, to name a few. But estimating the non-residential traffic is difficult, since that's often based off of square footage and without a site plan with a specific use and building size proposed, that could really vary. So I've only shown residential uses that are permitted in the zoning districts. The table also outlines traffic generation for two of the potential uses that would be allowed in the conditional Neighborhood Activities Center district. Once again, based on other UDO requirements, the maximum number of dwellings here, 337, isn't necessarily feasible. So it's possible that the traffic counts would end up being lower than this. And like with the current zoning district, only residential uses are shown for consistency here. So I've got townhome or single-family attached uses shown here with their potential traffic impact, as well as multifamily or apartment use shown. The slide also identifies some of the potential school impacts. And we recently obtained new data from Wake County Public School System to estimate the potential school impact. So based on that, the potential school impact for the current low-density residential zoning district would be 68 versus 100 under the Neighborhood Activities Center. This calculation method does not distinguish between different types of residential development, like single-family detached townhomes or multifamily. They're all considered the same. And it also doesn't give a breakdown of the distribution for the students based on elementary school, middle school, or high school. So this is just a total. And then I've also shown the school assignments for next school year. And then additionally, the applicant has met with the HOA for Carpenter Village, which is one of the adjacent neighborhoods, and discussed some of the residents' concerns, and those mainly related to traffic, pedestrian safety, and some drainage issues. Overall, staff is recommending approval of both of the requests with the conditions that have been proposed by the applicant. And we're making this recommendation for a number of reasons. Just to review quickly, we feel that these requests would result in orderly and logical development due to compatibility with the nearby zoning districts and the new nearby existing uses. This would also help define the gateway entrance into Morrisville. It's located at an intersection of two major thoroughfares, so we feel that this intensity of use is appropriate along a corridor like that. It also would contribute to preserving the natural environment with the open-space and tree-preservation designation. And then finally, this type of use would serve as an appropriate transition between the commercial and retail activity directly on the corner and some of the other residential development down the street. So the ask of the board tonight is to make a recommendation on the resolution for the land use plan amendment, resolution on the consistency statement for the rezoning request, and the ordinance for the rezoning request. Just as a reminder, this is a legislative request, so the decision is discretionary. And I've put on the screen some of the criteria that you might want to consider when making a recommendation on both of the requests, the land use plan amendment and the rezoning. And then additionally, as mentioned, one of the actions is to make a recommendation on a consistency statement. And here are some of the reasons that staff feel this request is consistent and in the public interest. As mentioned, these parcels are adjacent to and across from other Neighborhood Activities Center land use plan designated areas, as well as zoning districts, and is suitable for both residential and commercial use. If the land use plan were amended, then the rezoning request would be consistent with that newly amended plan. And additionally, one of the goals of the Neighborhood Activities Center is to provide moderate walkable development that's compatible with the surrounding areas, and we feel that this request does that and is a good transition between the existing uses. So the planning and zoning board can recommend approval of the application as submitted, can recommend approval of the application with additional conditions that are agreed to by the applicant, or you can recommend denial of the application. So that's the end of the presentation that I've prepared. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those. We also have members of the applicant team here tonight, if you have any questions for them. And I know they would wish to say a few words, too, so I'd ask Mr. Siegel and Attorney Birch to come up at this point, if that's all right.
Thank you, Carrie. So we're going to open the public comment session. Go ahead, if you could state your name.
The Board, Chairman Pritchard. My name is Carter Siegel. I work with Wood Partners. We are the applicant in this case. Wood Partners is a vertically integrated real estate company. We have, while we have our foundations, or one of the original offices is here in the Carolinas, we've grown to a national platform with about 17 offices around the country. But we've been in the Carolinas for about 20 years. Over that time period, we've developed about 14 properties here in the Triangle. Currently, we own two assets, one at 616 Oberlin and Raleigh. We're under construction on a project in Durham at Farrington Road and Highway 64. In Morrisville, our most recent project here was the Bristol, which was developed in Park West Village. The, from a multifamily standpoint, we're very considerate and thoughtful in how we pursue our projects. We've been involved in this project for a little over three years now, to the agreement of some of the land sellers. But we've studied the project, studied the location. We have a market study from CB Richard Ellis that helped us analyze the different uses for the site. From the best, from the highest and best use, we looked at office. They determined that office in this location with the competition from the RTP was probably not a suitable use from an economic standpoint. From a retail standpoint, as staff presented, the intersection has retail on all three corners existing. From a commercial standpoint, economic standpoint, for retail to work, you need a credit tenant typically to lead a quality Class A retail development. Many of those retail tenants are already in the market, weapons being an example, is under construction up the road. And so their opinion was that retail would be difficult to do in a Class A format. You could always do one-off, single-tenant restaurants or other uses there. But a Class A, high-quality retail center in this location was probably not appropriate from an economic standpoint. From a multifamily standpoint, it seems to make a lot of sense from an economic standpoint. It's an appropriate transition, as staff mentioned, from single-family to commercial at the intersection. And so with that, we proceeded. The other thing that's worth noting, from a traffic impact standpoint, of the office and retail and multifamily of those potential uses, multifamily is, has the less of a traffic impact. From a market standpoint, from an economic standpoint, office typically needs about five parking spaces per 1,000 square foot of office space. Retail is close to about five per 1,000. And multifamily, in this case, we're proposing 1.6 spaces per 1,000 square feet of developer space. So it is a lower impact, just from a traffic standpoint. We've been, as we've advanced our plans, appreciating we have many different constituents we need to be sensitive to. We try to be as sensitive as possible to our surrounding neighbors and anticipate what their concerns would be as we move forward. We've met with staff multiple times. We've heard their comments through our submittals. We've tried to be sensitive to their needs and their requests. For example, we have accommodated an access drive to Davis through the existing CVS, which is a little bit of a tricky connection, but we've leaned in and accommodated that. Our original plan actually had residential units on the south side of the stream buffer. And working with staff, we've agreed to set aside that entire area, about a third of the site, as a protected greenway or green space with a tree buffer. As staff mentioned, we have met, we voluntarily reached out to our neighbors to the west and to the south. And we, as a group, are fairly open book. We don't ever try to hide the ball. And so we want to make sure that all of our neighbors are aware of what's happening. They may not like what's happening, but we want to make sure that everyone's aware and we're being honest in how we present that. One of the things, we have had neighborhood meetings. One of the things that came up in the most recent meeting is the concern about a buffer between the residential and where we are. And so we think, and we hope that the tree preservation area will help to mitigate some of those concerns. So in closing, again, we're thoughtful in how we go about doing this. We think it's appropriate, we think the transition or the request for Neighborhood Activities Center is an appropriate use, given the other three intersections, other three corners of the intersection are zoned that way. We think that multifamily would be an appropriate transition as we go from the single-family neighborhood to the west and to the south, to the busy intersection to the east. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners here on behalf of Wood Partners. Want to speak briefly to the land use plan amendment that we filed. We feel that that's justified based on the other quadrants at this intersection of two major thoroughfares. Each quadrant has about 15 to 30 acres of land within the Neighborhood Activities Center. The inclusion of this land, which is about 19.84 acres, when you include that, would be very similar to those other quadrants. Again, it is located at the intersection of two major thoroughfares, and the use is allowed in the Neighborhood Activities Center. Again, even kind of considering our rezoning, provides an appropriate transition between the commercial there and Carpenter Village to our west. Regarding the rezoning, again, we think it's consistent with the vision for residential here, albeit at a higher density. But again, we think that that's justified, as we stated, with the land use plan amendment. We think it also will provide some additional residents in the area close to goods and services and office, provide some additional customers for the retail that already exists in the area. As Carter mentioned, market study kind of came back and said, site's not appropriate for office, retail, those commercial uses. But to try and address the intent and the vision of the Neighborhood Activities Center and to also kind of provide some unique workspaces for Morrisville residents, we have committed to include live-work units in one of the buildings, and that's where the unit would kind of have diverted space, one kind of more on the ground floor for work area, but then also accommodate kind of the living quarters kind of within that same unit. But we think that that's something unique in the town. I don't believe a live-work unit has been provided in Morrisville yet, but we see that as something that can kind of meet the entrepreneurial spirit of a lot of folks that live in Morrisville. Carrie mentioned a lot of the conditions. I just want to highlight a few that, particularly with regard to the preservation of the area really around the stream and to the south. As Carter mentioned, a portion of that area is actually outside of environmentally sensitive areas. There's some high ground there, but we have included that within the area to be preserved. It's that kind of southwest corner there. And accessing that would require a stream crossing, but by keeping all of that space protected in a tree-preservation area, we don't have any stream impacts. We have provided, again, a 30-foot-wide easement location to be determined, to try and make a connection from Carpenter Village to the Davis Drive's street-side trail, recognizing that the Morrisville Community Park is on the east side of Davis Drive there as well. And that eight acres, a little over eight acres, represents about 40%, 40% of the site. Well, again, just in conclusion, follow up on many of the staff recommendations and staff conclusions. We think it's consistent with the land use plan, reasonable and in the public interest. We think it'll improve pedestrian safety in the area, given the improvements that will be made along Morrisville Carpenter Road, compatible with the surrounding uses, appropriate transition between retail and the lower-density residential. We're protecting the environmentally sensitive areas, and again, we're locating residents in close proximity to goods, services, employment, and then also providing some unique work opportunities. So in addition to Carter and myself, also want to recognize the traffic impact analysis was prepared as a part of this application. It's been reviewed by the town. Our engineers with Kimley Horn, Earl Llewellyn, and Kevin Dean are here. The board has any questions for them as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. Mr. and Mrs. Luter, would you like to speak? And Ms. and Mrs. Luter? I'm up for a public comment. Would you like to come to the podium and make a comment? Harry, can you tell me, would they like to? Thank you. Have it this time, okay. Take your time, Mr. Luter. None of us is getting any younger, we know that.
My name is Rover Luter. I don't know too many of you, but most of you know where we live. Well, you know, sometimes, you know, things keep moving on. There's several things I think about, like the dumpsters and all that. I hope they're going down the other way, but I hope that somebody's got that on their plans. And we've got some animals right now. They're at home. So, you know, we've got to keep that in mind. Do you folks have any questions?
Well, we're not supposed to get into debate, Mr. Luter, but what do you think of the development? Are you in favor of it or not?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, maybe.
I know you've seen more changes.
I've got a real close friend that's back at Old Dale Lumley, but I hate to see him move. But I see him at some school.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Luter. Mr. Lumley, you're down to speak as well. Would you like to say something? So I have Dennis and Denise St. Andrew, I think.
Good evening. My name is Dennis St. Andrew, and I'm a residential property owner near the properties in question. Those properties that are there right now are low-density residential, and what's proposed, I think, would be a drastic change. Change being from three residential properties to four, five-story buildings with hundreds of apartments, some with home offices, and hundreds of parking spaces. The traffic situation on the road right there now is already terrible. The illumination coming from those properties now is normal, what you would have from residential homes. With this proposal, you'd have an overwhelming amount of illumination at night, so drastically change the situation. My last point is, on the western side of the plan, I don't think there's much of a buffer at all that would be allowed between the proposed property and Carpenter Village. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Can you please preside your address for the record, Mr. St. Andrew, if you don't mind? Thank you.
110 Ivy Tree Place, Cary.
Mr. White was on the list, but left. McDonough?
Thank you all. My name's John McDonough. I live at 209 Magnolia Bloom Court. I spent the week emailing with Mr. I spent the week emailing with Mr. Barrett in the town of Morrisville, and he was extremely helpful in understanding some of my concerns about the drainage. There are two streams that drain behind the bottom of Magnolia Bloom Court that go across this property in question, and during huge rains like what we had last week, these swell to 10 to 30 times their size under normal conditions. And my concern is, well, I have a couple of concerns. One is, kids are curious about this stuff, you know, and a repairing buffer's nice, but kids don't really care. They're going to see it, and they're going to go to it, and especially after a storm, this thing's going to be moving fast for a long time. You know, I sent a video to Mr. Barrett, I'm sure he can share that with y'all, but I would be extremely concerned putting this many children, and if it's hundreds of units, it's going to be more than 100 kids that are going to be there in proximity to that stream without some additional consideration for barriers to access to that. You know, and the other part is, we've lived here in Carpenter Village for eight years, and we plan to stay here for quite a while. We've been looking forward to further development of this property, and what I really want, you know, personally, I want to see it be harmonious with the surroundings. You know, Carpenter Village, we start from single-family homes here, we go through town homes, and ultimately into the center of the neighborhood is an apartment complex, Bexley, and then it goes back on the other side through town homes and single-family homes, and that gradual transition is very harmonious, and it makes for a really connected neighborhood. It's very integrated, and we feel very connected to each other. We come together as a neighborhood on the lawn for concerts in the summer. We come together with the neighborhood swim team. There's all sorts of events that we hold, but the neighborhood is cohesive, and by putting much taller buildings, and these are out of proportion to the neighboring communities, you know, Grace Park has 128 units, and that's a 30-acre parcel, you know. I feel like something on that scale would be more harmonious, and just to challenge the point about the economic, you know, what these other types of economic uses, what's the vacancy rate for the commercial pieces of Bethany Village, Morrisville Market, and Grace Park? I've been here eight years. I've seen one sandwich shop close and another one open two weeks later repeatedly. You know, there are people lined up to take those spaces, so I would challenge that there's not demand for types of economic, other uses. So with that, I really appreciate your time. It's really the drainage and how harmonious the plan is with the whole gestalt of this area is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonough. Anybody else who would like to speak in our public comment session? Being done, we'll close that public comment session, and we'll start with some board discussion.
I guess his first question is, at the same Mr. White that wanted the undergrounding.
It looks like he has left, and I believe that he probably meant to sign up for the other item.
Like, this is the project that he...
No, that was a different project.
I think he just signed up on this sheet. A mistake.
And I have a question for Mr. Siegel. Questions? Is it really five stories?
So it's a four-story building with a basement is how it's, I believe it's how it's permitted. So it's a, the site falls from, it has a fair amount of fall from top to bottom, and so it's four stories, and then the bottom story is the basement or the fifth floor, so to speak. And so from the neighborhood standpoint, they'd be looking up at five stories, but from grade, at grade, it's four stories at Morrisville Carpenter, if that makes sense. So the pitch of the roof is a four-story roof, and then there's a basement level as well. So it's a four-to-five split, or four on one side and five on the other as the hill falls away.
Book like the Bristol?
Yes, similar. As I mentioned in the neighborhood meeting in the day, that project was built in 2014. We're proud of that one, but this is, the market has improved, and rents have improved, and so we expect this to be maybe a half step. It's in the eye of the beholder, but we think will be a little bit nicer than the Bristol.
Well, I see the only, like, the approval process is like a change in conditions, and the only condition I think is that it's a little bit more than the 89, 89 pieces.
Yeah, sorry.
So under the current zoning district, which is low-density residential, the maximum density is four and a half units per acre, so if you just, again, rough numbers, four and a half times 20, in theory, you could get 89 dwelling units under the current zoning, but realistically, once you take into consideration the floodplain, the buffers, you know, parking, other requirements, 89 would not probably be able to fit on here. Under the proposed zoning district of Neighborhood Activity Center, the maximum density is 17 units per acre. So again, under that same strict math, 20 times 17, I think it was 337 dwelling units total. Again, that's...
Changes in the density requirement being asked for.
Right, and the type of use. So under the current zoning district of low-density residential, single-family detached would be permitted. Under Neighborhood Activity Center, townhomes and multifamily are permitted as far as residential types of uses.
Or it's community need. It's like, we're going to be wall-to-wall townhomes all the way up to Lewis Stevens just about. I don't know what the community need is for more townhomes, and especially four- and five-story apartment buildings in that area. That's just me, I don't see it.
Yeah, one other, you mentioned the Bristol, that's an example. We actually do have a four-to-five split in that project as well, so if you, that's a good example of that type of building as well.
At the risk of jumping around a little bit, Carrie, could I ask you some sort of broad questions before we go forward? First question is, after this session tonight, what other planning and zoning board involvement would there be? For example, would we get to see the site plan?
Yes. So if they are proposing a development with more than 50 units, it would come back to planning and zoning board and town council for a decision as an administrative process, and I'm pretty sure they're going to be proposing more than 50 units if it were approved.
So it would come back before us, but we'd have very little flexibility about what we could and could not do?
Right. Commentary would, or recommendations would be based on UDO regulations, and if those are met or not.
So to put it crudely, this is our best kick at the can tonight, so wanted to get that clarified.
Yeah, so I guess the answer around, or the concern around the barrier, the buffer between Carpenter Village and buffer, is that also a fence?
No, that's just a delineation of what the buffer would be. So the buffer is 50 foot from top of banks, so those dotted lines are the kind of buffer boundaries. So given that they haven't gone into, you know, full-blown site plan, the specifics of fence or the exact landscaping within the buffer, for instance, haven't been determined or proposed at this time, but you are correct that the repairing buffer would come between the two properties, which, given that it's 50 foot on either feet, would be at least 100 foot separation, you know, potentially more.
But I guess the question I have, maybe as a reminder, between NAC and Carpenter Village would be equivalent of low-density residential? They're not a requirement?
Correct, yeah, there would be a required perimeter buffer, which would be a type C buffer, which in our code says it's either a 20-foot planted buffer, or it can be reduced down to 15 feet when you add a fence. So we always give usually two options with a reduced width for increased opacity.
Doesn't have to be a fence, then?
It doesn't have to be, no.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I guess the clarity on the density, I mean, we're essentially, you know, we're seeing an area that really can't be developed that much be absorbed in for acreage count, so that the density goes from what would have, the three parcels on the north side would have normally been able to support maybe, let's just throw out, a number of 20 houses there, 20 towns or something, and now it's, you know, 300 in the same area because they're absorbing what's floodplain and can't really be developed that much anyway. I don't love that, but when I look at the intersection as a whole, I do believe it benefits the community, because I think the area needs more, realistically, more dense housing in Morrisville, in my opinion, and this particular intersection could support those businesses that are in the area as well. The walkability of that really improves when you add that kind of density so close to those retail centers, and I do like that. I am a little bit disappointed for the citizens backing up to that in Carpenter Village. Now, instead of a nice wood line, would be looking at four-story building. That's the biggest thing. I think my questions are answered, so thanks.
Hi, Jane.
Just a couple of clarification. Did I, the picture shows a stub to the SCP property. If I'm correct, I heard the gentleman say that they agreed to build a road into that property? Is that correct? It's not just a stub going nowhere?
So condition number four, which is what relates to that, has multiple parts, and I know it's super wordy, so one part of the condition is, yes, they would build a stub from their parcel to the closest portion that they can to the property line, which is consistent with what we require for any development, and then the remaining portion up to the property line that could not immediately be constructed. If that were the case, they would provide a payment in lieu and a construction easement, cross-access easement, so it would be able to be constructed in the future. In addition to that, in order to try to achieve that full connectivity through the CVS site, they have also proposed to offer a payment-in-lieu fee for whatever the cost of the construction would be to make that completion, or the design, or $100,000, whichever is less since a full design has not been done at this point. We have kind of a preliminary design that would require the cooperation of CVS since it is their property, but as far as this condition, there is the offer to build the connection up to the property line, and then the payment for the remainder all the way through the other property to try to achieve that as much as they have the ability and control, you know, on their side.
I'm not a big fan of taking, you know, funding in lieu so that the town can build it, right? So I would really prefer that the property owners...
Yeah, and I should add that there is ongoing conversations with them, so that is the goal, that it would happen without the payment in lieu, so I guess in the event that it did not happen before, then that's why the payment in lieu is offered.
And to add to that, is CVS as part of their site plan approval, they are supposed to allow for a connection at a mutually agreeable location. At this point, they are currently be fined on a daily basis because they are not willing to do it at this point. So we are approaching it from the enforcement. Really, the next step at this point is, we will most likely start withholding any permits. So for example, if their AC goes out and they need to pull a permit to replace that or water heaters, we're no longer going to issue them. So we are going to continue the enforcement side of it, and they will be continued to be fined daily until they decide to comply with their site plan.
So you're saying it's a contention? It isn't, they're just hoping, it's not a friendly conversation? This is contentious now?
I'm not saying it's contentious. I'm saying they're receiving it, and they're not following up on it, and that the applicant is willing to make the connection. CVS at this point is not meeting the conditions of their approval.
The second question I had, I heard you talk about some parking space exception, or the street size exception?
That would be the driveway spacing. Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay. So currently, for driveways onto a thoroughfare, which Morrisville Carpenter Road is, the driveway spacing requirement is 400 feet, and the UDO does allow, under certain circumstances, a reduction by 20%, which would be 320 feet would be the new spacing, and so that's what the applicant is proposing, that the two driveways that are in gray here, which would be kind of the regular driveways, so to speak, not any emergency access-only driveways, would be allowed to be up to 320 feet apart rather than the regular 400 feet apart.
What are the implications of doing that?
I'll probably defer to Ben for that.
I mean, implications of not doing it versus doing it?
Well, I guess of not doing it, then they probably would not be able to have the two driveways in the locations that they've identified. So allowing that reduction would allow for the two driveways, basically, but I'll let Ben speak to maybe the purpose of driveway spacing.
So in our regulations, we require driveway spacing, and it's to help with access management. However, on Morrisville Carpenter Road, as a lot of the roads in Morrisville, we don't have control over the road. It is an NC DOT road, so ultimately, it is NC DOT that approves the driveway locations, driveway spacing, and so this is one of those instances where they've provided a transportation impact analysis, they've looked at the spacing of the driveways, at the ride-in, ride-out, at full movement, at different options for how those driveways can be placed and the movement of them, and DOT has given initial okay, that they're okay with a smaller spacing than 400 feet. And so, and our, as Carrie said, our UDO does allow us to reduce that 400 down, so we, based on the information provided by the applicant, it appears that NC DOT would be okay with that 320-foot roughly spacing, and so therefore, the staff feels that, you know, we would be okay with it as well.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I think part of one of the desired locations is to be able to align with the driveway across the street, so in that sense, that's kind of another factor that's contributing to the decision to place the driveways where they are.
Yes, there's, because of where the existing full-movement driveway for Bethany Village is, that made the best sense, and both from engineering and just, it makes sense to have this property's full-movement driveway directly across from that, and so when you have that, and then you have the existing CVS driveway, you're very limited in where you can place another driveway. And again, for fire, life, safety issues, and to meet our ordinance, they really need at least two driveways on Morrisville Carpenter Road.
I would just concern that by limiting it, is it going to cause any traffic safety issues? That was my primary question for asking, you know, going from 400 to, you're almost bringing it down by 80 feet, right? So is that, would it contribute to any safety issues?
That I really can't answer. That is why we have the applicant do a transportation impact analysis, so if you're okay with that, I'll let their traffic engineer address that.
Good evening. Earl Llewellyn, Kimley Horn and Associates Traffic Engineer. As staff has said, we did a traffic study for this project, which was reviewed by not only town staff, but their consultant, as well as NC DOT, and we met with them in advance to speak about driveway locations. Of course, it does... Of course, it does... Of course, it does, as Benjamin said, to make sense to align the full movement access with Bethany, and then try to achieve a spacing, basically midway between the intersection with Davis and the full movement here. That's the best location, that's the safest location, that's the location that will have the fewest number of conflicts. DOT agreed with that as part of their review comments on the traffic study.
Yeah, I was more concerned about the turn signals that you have, the right-in, right-out, isn't that where your space constraints are?
Yes, that this one, this one is located, basically as I said, mid-frontage, and because it is right-in, right-out only, there's very limited conflicts. We've kept our full movement access away from the intersection to do the same thing.
And this last question is really about, for the size of the construction plan, do we see parking being sufficient, or, you know, is parking, given the roadways they have, is it sufficient, or are you, are they planning to build, if you will, under the building parking?
So typically, parking is something we would look at once we get to site plan because it is more specific, and they would have to meet the UDO requirements, which is one-vehicle space for every one-bedroom apartment, the equivalent of one and a half for each two-bedroom apartment, and two spaces for each three-bedroom apartment. And then for some of the accessory uses, like a pool or other type of recreation facility, there are some additional spaces required for that. So that would be handled at the site plan level, and would be something they would have to meet in order to receive an approval.
One last question about parking. If I heard properly, this is being planned as a more live-and-work community?
It's not that the entire development would be built that way, it would predominantly be multifamily, and as worded, the condition says that at least one of the buildings would contain a few live-work dwellings.
So the question is, when you have places where there is work allowed, is there any additional parking needed besides the ones that you just talked about for personal living?
I'd have to look that up, one moment.
As long as you take that into plan, I'm okay with that. It's just that I want to make sure we account for parking for, you know, the workspaces that you may have within the dwelling, along with, in addition to, you know, the living spaces. This way, we have enough space for everybody to park.
When we say live-work, are we talking about like a office center on the ground floor, like by a leasing office?
No, it would be contained within each individual unit. So the UDO definition of a live-work dwelling is a structure or a portion of a structure combining a residential dwelling unit for one or more persons with an integrated workspace principally used by one or more of the dwelling unit residents. So it's kind of like a home office, but they would still maybe be able to receive clients.
There'd be like a storefront, like a consulting office?
Right, it could, and so as Carter mentioned, oftentimes, it might be two stories, like a two-story unit within the building, where the first story could be kind of more the office area, and the second story would be the living area. But it doesn't necessarily have to be configured that way.
All I was saying is, as long as we take into account that additional parking space for visiting clients and employees, that would be something to be planned for.
Catherine?
Has underground parking been considered based on the topography of the site? Not being, okay. Which is, instead of going down a level, it seems that might be a good use of the site. And then, you're fairly confident at this stage that you will be building apartments and not condominiums?
Maybe we'll ask Mr. Segal to come back to the microphone. Thank you.
I do just want to say, at least from a zoning standpoint, we don't make a distinction between for rental or for purchase, it would just be considered multifamily, but I'll let Mr. Segal answer what their company does.
Yeah, and Michael reminded me, we have studied underground parking physically, feasibly doesn't work, so we have looked at that, forgotten that. I'm sorry, what was your other question? Oh condos, sorry. We are wood partners, we're apartment operators, owners and operators.
Okay.
We will build it, we will own it, and we will operate it, and so it'll be operated as apartments while we own the asset.
And so then, are you thinking about like a Bristol where you have a parking garage for the residents, or are they all going to be street-level around these buildings?
They will, the Bristol, the project will be built in, the project we built, the Bristol here in Morrisville, does not have a parking deck.
Oh, it's the other one, it's downtown, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yes, Catherine?
No, sure, thank you.
Want to get clarification on the number of cars. So we looked at the units potentially going, where it's zoned at 89, upwards of 300, but then when we looked at the cars, you mentioned the average car per unit, what do we estimate total number of vehicles on the site for residents, and then including ancillary parties to the site?
Sure, so based on the, just looking at the apartment use based on maximum density, that's what's shown here on the screen, but it's part of the transportation impact analysis that the applicant did based on what they anticipate the actual build-out of the site to be in terms of the number of apartment units, as well as that live-work component. And I can put this, if I can remember how to use.
Got to foot the top on that, too. It's, you got to take that arm and, don't you?
The whole thing, yeah.
There you go. Like the light, just move now, move the light away from you, but tilt it back, no, move the whole arm of the light away from you.
Okay, so as you can see, they don't anticipate having 337 dwelling units, as would be the maximum permitted under the density, but rather 200 and something. And then, because live-work is a particular use, the codebook for the traffic estimates doesn't have that specifically listed, so office was used as a substitute. So the total morning and evening trips are outlined in the table.
Okay, so with that, looking at 100-plus new trips funneled onto one road, that at already in current time is at pretty well capacity. Couple of questions there, the lineup of the driveways, it looks like they're aligned to the adjacent property. Does that create a safety issue with people trying to circumvent the traffic, natural traffic pattern and cutting right across, or cutting in some other way? And then is there a way that we can get access to Davis Drive from get-go? Because I think even just trying to come out of that CVS at peak times is challenging. You're going to put 100-plus apartments or cars, or however we phrase it, is going to create a pretty big congestion there. Is there a way to circumvent that through a different access road through Davis?
So currently, the applicant is proposing, with one of the conditions, to not have a direct connection or access onto Davis Drive, and instead, you know, working towards that goal of achieving the cross-access through the CVS in order to provide an access to Davis Drive. But to answer your question...
We're not getting that, so in essence, it's going to, all of these cars are going to funnel right into Morrisville Carpenter.
Right, unless that cross-access, which is the goal, through CVS would be provided in order to get to Davis.
And I think part of the reason for that does have to do with some of the environmental on the site, and I did want to point out that our stormwater minister, Joshua Baird, is also here tonight, if you do happen to have any questions for him.
So, yeah, as I mentioned earlier, there are a couple of streams on the property, so being able to build a connect, a direct connection to Davis Drive through the site would involve stream crossings. There's also wetlands on the site, as well as the floodplain, so there would be some significant challenges in doing that.
Yeah, to clarify, so the chances of that happening, given all of the challenges that are lined up, are pretty slim. So we're looking at that property in whatever form that it exists, dumping out onto a single road with a majority of the cars going in one direction, that's pretty heavy transit right now. Okay, thank you.
So, as far as the live-work units, so if that fails and doesn't work, what happens with, that can just be any of the uses that are in, and they're not excluded uses from the thing, like can it be converted to whatever retail or whatever separately and walled off?
If they were to change it to a different type of use, it would still have to go through a minor modification, depending on the extent of how much that was, it probably would be something that would still be handled at the staff level, rather than needing to go back through the major site plan process. If it were just, you know, a few units in the overall development, that would be changing. But, yeah, that is a possibility.
Right, because I was just looking at, you know, the use table, I mean, there's a lot of uses in there that may or may not be super compatible with everything else there that are not excluded, there's only four excluded uses. So I just was, you know, wondering what would happen. Then, so, alright, so we talked about the CVS thing, so the, I know there's payment in lieu for this Morrisville Carpenter turn lane, is that something that's actually going to happen, or is that sort of, eh, it's going to happen one day?
As far as, they would actually pay the contribution, but when would the on-the-ground improvements occur?
Correct, yeah.
Ben, do you have an answer to that?
At this time, we wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to, I don't think we could say when those improvements may occur. Depending on timing, there is a chance they could occur towards the end of the town's Morrisville Carpenter Road widening project, potentially. If not, then that open lot at Grace Park, when that develops, they're obviously going to have some impact. They may, you know, maybe, they may have a way to construct the turn lane, in which case, if they're required to construct the turn lane, we would certainly look at giving them the PIL to assist them.
Right.
So we don't know, I mean, short answer is, it could happen fairly soon, or it could be a number of years out.
And then, what was my train of thought here? So, and so the topography, I was just trying to look, it appears that the houses in Carpenter Village are a decent amount lower already than this property where these buildings are going to go. So are all the buildings slated to be the same level? I mean, you know, it would certainly make me feel better if there was more of a step type situation away from the houses, so you'd have like a, you know, a 60-foot building on a 40-foot hill, you know, maybe you have a 30-foot building, and then the 60-foot buildings are beyond that, I don't know, that would certainly be more of a step. But I guess if everything's going to be the same, well, it doesn't really matter, I guess we can only approve it or disapprove it, so we're sort of doing that in the dark.
I mean, not to say that you couldn't add a condition to limit the number of stories, you know, beyond what the UDO would allow.
I'd be open and supportive of that, if that was the case, you know, giving a lower, lower stories by Carpenter Village, and six-story on the road front, I mean, that, it seems like it would be a little more sensible for, from a privacy and impact to that neighborhood perspective.
Just for informational purposes, permitted in the district that's requested is 50 feet. Just wanted you to have that information, but if that was something that you wanted to see as part of this application, you can make that request. Ultimately, any conditions need to be voluntary by the developer.
So even if we wanted to, you couldn't even trade away though now, you couldn't trade and say, oh, the lower building here, but do like one taller building to keep your units the same, because we wouldn't be over the 50 feet if you're doing five-story.
You could ask to, I mean, one of the actions is to postpone a decision this evening, to ask them to go back and consider that.
I mean, under the UDO though, we couldn't automatically just say, do a 60-foot building to trade away the extra floor here with the extra floor in the other building.
No, you could not, but just keeping in mind with conditions, you can make them more or less restrictive than what's a lot of the code. So in theory, you could say, maintain the density that'd be allowed, but then step it down here and increase the height here. That is something you could ask them to consider, and they can bring back a response to that.
Else me? Eric, could you take me back to the TIA?
This one or the Elmo one?
The good old-fashioned magic lantern one.
The paper one, yeah, okay.
Thank you. So this is, this is the summary. I guess my question is, you know, there's this which is about 230 dwelling units, Franklin Place going in in Carpenter Village, place of that open space that used to be there for the farmer's market, but Feral Farms, that's an awful lot of extra traffic. What are we really doing, what's the mitigation?
For what this development would be doing?
I guess that's, unfortunately, that's all we can look at.
As far as what this development would be doing, in addition to the contributions that we just talked about with the conditions towards those intersection improvements, they would be required to do whatever the transportation plan calls for, for the cross-sections, which I believe is almost an extra lane of right-of-way dedication, as well as the sidewalk.
The, along their frontage, they will be, they'll be required to construct an additional lane of travel, possibly contribute a, half of a PIL towards half the cost of a planted median, depending on where their driveways and what the median is out there now, as well as curbing gutter and a sidewalk along their frontage.
But they, if they wanted to, could they extend the sidewalk along to Carpenter Village, because right now I think it stops?
The existing sidewalk actually pretty much stops right at their boundary, so they would be connecting to the existing sidewalk.
Connectivity, that's good. That intersection, Davis Drive and Morrisville Carpenter, it's heavily traveled, an awful lot of traffic, and it's got quite a bad accident record. I think that's fundamentally because it doesn't cross at right angles, there's a slight angle, so the visibility is not good. Is anything going to be done about that?
Not by this development, they have actually, through their transportation impact analysis, they've shown that at Morrisville Carpenter Road and Davis Drive intersection, they're only contributing 2% to 3% additional traffic, so the, while it is a relatively heavy traffic generating use, in the grand scheme of things, they're only contributing... they're only contributing a small portion of additional traffic to that intersection. We know that intersection has problems. DOT has tried to address some of them with the project a few years ago. And even after that, they, DOT has said that they did the best they could to really address that intersection. It's gonna require significant work that really would have to be done by DOT because of the amount of work that's needed. It, they essentially would need to go in and dig out the entire intersection, completely rebuild it from scratch.
Great. And in terms of, this is gonna be relatively high-density. Kind of, one could argue that's good because people can walk to the stores. How are the pedestrians gonna get from this quadrant over to, for example, Bethany Village or across to Grace Park?
They would walk to the Davis Drive intersection, use the signalized crosswalks located at that intersection.
Alright. Is there gonna be a stoplight there, or, or the ability to go across?
Not at this time. It would, that ultimately would be up to DOT. NC DOT would have to look at whether it met warrants. My guess, and Mr. Llewellyn can probably confirm this or, or speak to this a little bit better, but more than likely, it would not meet warrants at this time, even with Bethany Village and the apartments built out. As we've talked about before, traffic signal warrants with DOT are very difficult to meet. It takes a lot of traffic and a lot of things to meet them. So, assuming that there wouldn't be a traffic signal at the, initially, then we would, you know, hope, ideally, the residents would walk down to the signalized crosswalk at Davis Drive. Putting anything other, any type of mid-block crossing anywhere else on there than at Davis Drive would be probably a very dangerous situation.
I agree. A very topical question. Will the utilities be underground?
If there are any utilities across their frontage, they would be required to be installed underground for the UDO as it stands right now.
Mention was made of it being a, sort of a gateway to, to Morrisville. Eons ago, when the first of these quadrants was being developed, on a very voluntary basis, with no adequate staff, because those are the bad old days. We didn't have a wonderful planning department. Well, they were wonderful, but very small. We tried to have a theme for each of those quadrants. Issue was, the quadrants weren't being developed by the same developer. So, the comparison was made, for example, with Preston Corners, his high house and, uh, Harry Parkway, thank you. Where, you know, there's a commonality. There's sort of a same theme of columns and this, that, and the other. So, there was actually a circular theme that was supposed to go on each of those four quadrants. Anybody given any kind of consideration to making this somewhat compatible and homogenous, and not something that's totally different? I know we're into site plan-type territory, but it would be really nice to plant that seed. Because, you know, to have something that was so noticeably different that it just looked incongruous would be very unfortunate.
So, you're right. Typically, the design comes in at the site plan level, and we do have multi-family design standards. They would have to meet, those for the most part are, you know, be related to providing a variety of materials and colors on the building so that they don't all look the same. And also, I'm gonna switch back over to the sketch plan here. As they've demonstrated on the sketch plan, that the buildings take on different shapes also, so it's not just the same repeated building throughout the site. So, at the moment, the UDO design guidelines are more related to providing variety within the site itself, and doesn't necessarily speak to what the design style is for, you know, other adjacent parcels. But once again, if that's something that you wanted to suggest to the applicant as an added consideration of a condition, you can do that. Do you have anything in mind more specifically as far as what you think would be appropriate, given the surrounding development, to keep in line with that?
Well, I, I'd be very broad. I would simply ask Mr. Siegel and his team to consider the overall, the all-four quadrants, and consider that when you come up with a design and the site plan. It's kind of like the best developments in Morrisville. The developers looked at the streetscape, not just each individual elevation of each residential house, and it would be good to do that. I, I do have a couple of questions from Mr. Siegel, if you wouldn't mind, I know I keep making you jump up and down here, but... So, you, you mentioned a, a number of uses that you had considered. You're not gonna do retail, you're not gonna do office.
Correct.
Did you ever even consider single-family, low-density residential?
That's not what we do as a, as an organization. From an economic standpoint, I'd like to speak to the land sellers. This is a prominent commercial corner, so to speak. And so, it would be much less, it would be a much less valuable piece of land, a single family.
Give my, forgive my nostalgia, but, you know, the looter property with its kind of mini-farm and nursery always looked great to me, but that's, that's life. You also mentioned that you'd talk to your neighbors to the north and the south and the west.
West, west and south, yes.
I didn't hear you talk about the east.
The CVS is to the east, the looters are here, they're to the south, I should use my mouse, sorry. Yeah, sorry. So, the looters live here, right here. And we've spoken with this community just most recently on Tuesday night.
Right.
And then surrounded by commercial, that's the CVS there, and then commercial, obviously, across the street.
Unfair question. Do you have designs on maybe looting the property to the east, to the looter property?
We do not. We do not. The looters are very happy where they are.
We're happy that they are there.
If I may, can I go back to the, the plan that has the topo? I just, I wanted to- That's good, right there. To address the concerns about the building heights, I just wanted to also point out that the site is falling away from Morrisville Carpenter South. And so, as the buildings are laid out there, one of the examples I used at the neighborhood meeting on Tuesday night, it's more like stadium seating. And the how, the buildings, as the site steps down the hill, the building stepped down the hill as well. And so, this plan view makes it look like it's all flat and up on a hill. But the reality is, as the site steps down, so does, so do the buildings. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking, I mean, I just, there's no topo lines on the other side. And I was kind of looking on Apple Maps, and it looks still like it hits a stream. It's steeper on your side than it is on their side.
It's definitely higher. I don't want to mislead anyone. It's definitely higher up than, we're higher than the residential below. But I did want to make that clarification, that the site is falling away, and we're site-planning down the hill, kind of like stadium seating. Would be my analogy.
Fourth floor, the fifth floor of these proposed apartments could be staring down into the backyard of those folks there.
Theoretically, uh, yes.
Wouldn't be a theory.
Well, yeah, they'd be facing that direction. The other thing I'd mention-
I mean, what trees are there?
It's a 100-foot tree buffer there today. So, there's a 50-foot buffer on either side of that stream. And our intent is to leave that tree buffer there. And so, there is a noticeable tree buffer that's there.
If we took away from the, with the condition on the UDO about having different building shapes-
Sure.
As we're able to do, you know, where the, where the U and the, the one north of it are, three, like, three compacted together a little more, that were similar, just similar east-to-west buildings, could you feasibly take that other building even out of the picture? The building on the southwest, uh, southwest, yeah.
Not from an economic standpoint. One of the earlier site plans I mentioned before, we actually had a building down here. And what we've done is we have condensed our development to make it much denser, to save that southern area. And so, we've, we've, we've already gone up pretty high. So, that's a, so, we've kind of looked at that already. This is economically the best way to do it.
We talked earlier about, or, or one of the speakers talked about the stream and the danger. I, I know you're not the, the engineer on this project, but do you think that the stormwater detention that you're gonna have, will that mitigate some of the concerns about the stream?
This came up in the neighborhood meeting on Tuesday night, and I, and I preface this, I am not an engineer. It sounds as if most of the issue is happening upstream. But I did offer, I mean, just looking at the contours, the site does fall away in this direction today. I'm using my mouse to point. I don't know if you all can see that screen. As part of our development plan, per the town's guidelines, we have to install back of curb and gutters throughout the property. So, any rain that falls on the site roughly, kind of in this portion of it, would be captured and sent to the BMP here, which would then discharge at some point south of the pond into the stream. So, there would be some mitigation. I, I can't measure or, or wouldn't know how much that would be, but we would be adding less, practically speaking, on that side of the site. I don't know if that would be a huge help or not, but it would be less.
Got a comment from our stormwater expert?
Much more qualified.
So, regardless of the zoning, our stormwater regulations, they're no different between the zoning. And so, either way, it is, once our stormwater regulations are triggered, we have our detention requirements. Our detention requirements are for the one, two, and 10-year storm events. As the applicant has alluded to, some of this would be portrayed further down in the watershed. And the outfall will likely be further down on the stream to the south of the property. As you said, the, the riparian buffer is there. We have the 50-foot on, on each side of the banks. I don't know if there's any specific questions about the town requirements. I'm, I'm happy to answer, or...
I think that was a good overview. Thank you. I have one more question for, for staff, if Carrie may, and perhaps even for Courtney, and, you know. Would you, do you think of any other excluded uses or any other conditions that we might, that we might have explored? And that's, again, being unfair to you, it's putting-
Sure.
Asking you to do our work for us, but looking through that use table, there's an awful lot of things that maybe we should have perhaps thought about asking the applicant to exclude.
Well, I think it depends on what type of development you feel is appropriate here. So, as you mentioned, the Neighborhood Activity Center does allow for both residential and commercial and institutional uses. So, if, if you think that a mix, per se, is not appropriate to service that transition, I think you certainly could exclude some of the more intense commercial uses. But we do also want to think about not only what is there right now, and what do these applicants want to do, but kind of thinking long-term. You know, we would never want to propose a zoning district that, and I'm not saying or suggesting this, that only allows one or two uses, because that's very short-sighted. So, I do think we want to still, you know, think somewhat broadly and long-term, not just for what's there today. As far as other conditions, now that you've heard some of the concerns of the adjacent property owners, I think you've already come up with a couple of ideas, you know, related to the height that might be explored. Some of the other items that have been mentioned, as far as that buffer maybe could be further explored too, as far as other ways to provide some type of visual buffer between the two properties.
Thank you, Carrie. So, I know it's getting late. I'd love to go through that use table and, and have some discussion about that, but I don't think we've got time to do that. What would be the impact if we were to defer this, if we were to table this?
If you were to wait until the next meeting, of course, that would be, you know, one more month before this would go on to Town Council for the decision-making. And one, I guess, last month that they would have an answer to potentially be submitting a site plan in the event that it were approved. So, as far as the timeframe, that's what that would mean. I don't know if the applicant has a specific, you know, goal or timeframe in mind as far as keeping the project in line with their schedule.
Would you care to comment on that, Mr. Siegel?
Twenty million dollar question.
The, I guess I would answer, I, I believe we've, we've been, as I mentioned in my earlier, you know, preamble, we've been, we've met with staff many times, and we've been accommodating and trying to be up here for all the meetings. We, this hearing has already been, I think we delayed it at least for our schedule. We delayed this one month already to be here. Our interests are clearly to move forward as, as quickly as possible, and, but to be sensitive to, to the town's needs as well. So, my answer would be, I, I would love to have an answer as quickly as possible, so we could proceed. And I guess in, in consideration to the land sellers as well, the sooner we have an answer, the sooner we can then buy their land ultimately, so.
Alright. So, yeah, I know you, you mentioned you've been working on it for three years. We saw it last Friday, so... Would you like to make a motion?
According to the-
I think as an alternate, I'm not sure if you can make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion. I just think-
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Would like to slip over to Tim here.
If I could ask, if everybody could make sure their microphones are clear.
Sorry.
A lot of the audio is not being picked up, and I know some people have inadvertently covered them or put mute, hit their mute buttons. So, if you could please do a mic check, just to make sure everybody's audible.
Okay.
And I have included the principal use tables in attachment to the briefing packet, so if you'd like me to bring that up, I can do so.
Also very conscious of the time. What else do we have on the agenda tonight?
I think there's one other rezoning item, and that might be all.
We have another rezoning item, and then more administrative-related stuff regarding the, the schedule for the rest of the year. We would need to take a vote on that, and then staff and board comments.
Well, I'm comfortable keeping going till we need to, but would like some time to just look at that personally, so.
Or it's the last one?
Whatever the board chooses.
If you do need additional time, we'd ask that if it's possible to provide staff with any comments, by a specific deadline, so we can provide those to the applicant, and then they can appropriately respond and include in our packet next time. And so, if I'm, I'm looking at a calendar, um... I mean, we would really need those comments by Friday of next week. And that really allows the applicant approximately a week to make any changes if they so desire, and so for us to provide an update and get the packets back on time.
So, Tim, the-
I'd like to take, for asking, I'd like to table it to next meeting.
Go with that.
I'm gonna table it to next.
I make a motion to table this item, agenda item number 2018-2460 until the next planning and zoning meeting.
If I have a second for that motion?
Second it.
And I think we should take up Courtney's point that we would, to get any comments back by Friday week, that would be the 20th, I think.
That is correct, Friday the 20th.
Any discussion of that motion? Any discussion of that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion is carried three to two. I think I could speak for myself, but it's really only that table of use item that I want to go through. So I, I think the overall sense was nothing else that came up out of that discussion that would, maybe I'm.
Yes and no, I, I think that there is the, the table of use component, but I also think there needs to be something. Traffic study, I, I don't, I like to get more clarity around the 3% contribution, how that was arrived. I think that that needs to be looked at.
I still think we run the risk, you know, I mean, it's a heavily traveled road by outside people, we can wait till all the roads are developed, we're just going to lose out, and everyone's going to develop around us, and they're going to keep feeding traffic right through. That, I don't know, that has a lot of real impact, but.
No, but I think it's also.
We tried that whole philosophy like 15 years ago, and we are where we are now.
Part of it was the value to the community and a series of apartments.
No, I don't mean, I'm trying to.
You know, beyond traffic, so.
So we'll have more discussion next month.
Yeah, my thing would be the height buffer thing.
Well, thank you very much to the applicant and the, the supporting staff there. We move on to item nine, C, I think.
Good evening. I will try to re-brief. So this is item 2018-255-0. It's a request for a land use plan and zoning map amendment for a portion of property commonly known as 3045 Carrington Mill Boulevard. The property is specifically identified by Wake County PIN 0757-00-1338, and Durham County PIN 0747-03-90-9495. The Planning Department has made this request for the land use plan and zoning map amendments for the portion of the subject property to high-density residential in order to correct a mapping error that was, that occurred during the original rezoning back in 2009 or 10. So as you can see, the red part, portion that's outlined is actually part of this property here. This black line is the county line here. So that, the majority of the portion of the property got rezoned correctly to HDR. However, due to a mapping error, this portion did not. So we are submitting this request to correct that error. This is owned by the Sorrelit Perimeter Park Apartments. As you can see from the aerial map here, gives a little better view of which, what area we're talking about, needs to be rezoned. And as well as the site plan for the, the approved site plan for the apartments. You can see that the portion is actually affecting part of the construction area. Staff recommends approval based on the, what's on your screen there, but essentially based on the compatibility and with the existing use for the property and with the consistency with the surrounding area, as well as the fact that the amendments will allow for continuity with the town zoning map. The board is asked to review the request and make a recommendation to Town Council of either approval or denial, denial of the applications. Again, like Carrie's zoning, if the board does recommend approval of the zoning map amendment, a statement must be provided as part of the motion indicating how the request is or is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. And that's all I have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Elliot. Any questions for Elliot?
I had just one question. When I look at the map that you're showing here, that part of MDR and HDR, the one that overlaps at the very corner there? That, accurately, if you bring your cursor towards that 540, that corner there, go up a little bit, yep, that very corner there, which kind of bleeds into the MDR part?
Yeah, it is, it is kind of an odd, oddly shaped lot, but yes, it does go up. And we're thinking maybe that had something to do with the error occurring in the first place, maybe it got overlooked, yeah.
If, if, so you are saying that this shape itself is odd then?
Correct, yeah, for the actual, as you can see here, this shows the, the lot better.
Yeah.
Goes up here and goes down, yeah.
Thanks.
So this, this is the development where, depending on where the bedroom is, depends on where your kid goes to school. Because the county line goes right through the building, just amazing. Amazing. So if there are no further comments, I'd entertain a motion.
We do have a public comment session that has to be held for this as well.
Officially, anybody like to speak on this in the public comment session? Being none will close the public comment session, thank you. So do we have to do special consistency statements and all that stuff, Elliot?
I have to say, I love these cheat sheets. It's like, wow.
Well, you have this in front of you, Harleen, so maybe that's.
I'll do it, I'll do it, okay. So. Motion 2018-255-0, number one, land use planned amendment. I hereby recommend that the Planning and Zoning Board recommends approval to the Town Council Resolution 2018-2550A pertaining to the amendment of the land use plan for, plan for a portion of property commonly known as 3045 Carrington Mill Boulevard, and located in the vicinity of Carrington Mill Boulevard and Slater Road to the high-density residential use LUP 18-03. Consistency statement, as required by General Statute 160A-383, the Planning and Zoning Board finds that the requested zoning map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is in the public interest because the majority portion of the property commonly known as 3045 Carrington Mill Boulevard, and specifically identified by Wake County PIN 0757-00-1338 and Durham County PIN 0747-03-90-9495, has already been zoned to the high-density residential HDR zoning district and identified for high-density residential use. As a result, the requested zoning map amendment is compatible with the existing uses surrounding the subject portion of property and will result in a logical and orderly development pattern, thus the zoning map amendment is reasonable and in the public interest. Therefore, I hereby recommend that the Planning and Zoning Board recommends approval to the Town Council of Resolution 2018-255-0B pertaining to the adoption of a planned consistency review statement for proposed zoning map amendment for a portion of property commonly known as 3045 Carrington Mill Boulevard, and located in the vicinity of Carrington Mill Boulevard and Slater Road to the high-density residential zoning district REZ 18-04. Three, approving a zoning map amendment. I hereby recommend that the Planning and Zoning Board recommends approval to the Town Council Ordinance 2018-255-0, approving a zoning map amendment for a portion of property commonly known as 3045 Carrington Mill Boulevard, and located in the vicinity of Carrington Mill Boulevard and Slater Road to the high-density residential zoning district REZ 18-04.
I'll second that.
You got the easy job.
Motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, thanks Elliot.
Thank you.
So Courtney, I think you're going to talk about the revised schedule.
So I've highlighted the two items that are proposed to be revised. The first is the August 23rd work session, this is specific for the land use plan. And the second one is the September 6th meeting. And as I stated in the email, and of which we will have a majority based off the responses, is it so happens that the state conference, where we all go to get most of our continuing education credits, happens to fall on not only the same night as the Planning and Zoning Board, but actually the Town Council. So that we can actually go and get credits and not have to drive back and forth this across the state multiple times. We are asking to change it to the 6th, of which, again, a majority of you responded that you were available. So we are just asking to amend the schedule, specifically to add the August 23rd work session, and to change the September member meeting to the 6th.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see that email I downloaded, so that was going to be part of my question, was that the 23rd meeting is the joint meeting?
August 23rd meeting is the work session for the land use plan.
For the land use plan, okay. And I am 95% sure I'm going to be out of town for that meeting, and quite possibly for the 6th of September. And it's only, my mother's having major surgery in California. So the work session, I could certainly call into, understand that it's not an attendance, but both, you know. I'm calling it up front that I have conflict.
Certainly. I mean, for making decisions at both those, we just needed a majority at that point. And as an alternate, I think it's important, you know, you don't have to listen to the audio actively, but to go back and listen to it. So you can always provide an email for the work session to Brad for any comments that you want to add, and we can capture those. That's easy to do, because it is a work session, and there's really no action being taken. At the meeting, there's usually, I would say, direction, that's usually a majority direction provided. And you can always provide comments after the fact on that. And you're entitled to, you know, three absences a year. You know, and I don't know the exact appointment date, I'll have to go look at some of the details there. But I can have Marty touch base with you if there's going to be any attendance issues regarding missing both of those.
And you've always been very good at providing info upfront, so.
I tried to.
Thank you, Catherine. Motion to, I guess we do.
Got you, I'm going to be out for the 23rd traveling, and then possibly the 6th, depending if I get back in time, so.
6th actually works better for me than the 20, than the 12th, because I'm going to be out the following week. So I'll be here on the 6th.
I'll make a motion to approve by schedule as noted.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Courtney, your.
And the last item on the agenda is the June 2018 Planning Newsletter with our development activities. There were no new preliminary subdivision site plans or construction plans submitted in June. We did have one administrative approval of site plan, and that's the Town Place Suites by Marriott. And that is in the Carrington, it's right on the, trying to think, it's kind of at the corner of Lipton and Carrington Mill. Right there, the intersection, I recall the little island that's surrounded on three sides by 54. Lipton and Carrington Mill Boulevard, and it's a portion of that island that's not adjacent to 54. It's the location of that hotel. We were not in any planning-related Town Council approvals either. And really, the two big things that occurred is we launched map.social, which I, you know, provided an overview at last time, of which some of you have participated, in updating the Planning and Zoning Board map, and then Spring Fest. We had several outreach events related to the land use plan, the comprehensive transportation plan update, and the Active Kids strategic plan.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Board comments? Or did you have anything else on the staff side?
I don't have anything else, Chair.
I'd just like to, to formally thank our planning staff for guiding the transportation plan through the process. Finally, we've got it at least on its way from the PCB, so awful lot of work and effort, so.
And I would like to return the thank you. I think you did, you put a lot of thought and energy into it, and it yielded a better product over the course of eight months, I may be overestimating the number, but eight months.
Feels like longer. Motion to adjourn?
Second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you. I know this was a late one, but. You too, Rob.